Liked to welcome everybody out to our commission meeting on this seventh day of February. If you can all please stand and repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, I'd like to get through at least the first, the presentation and then I would, we have some people from Salt Lake that would like to present on item number 10 on our agenda. If we could have a motion to move that to item number two. We'll do the presentation of the employee of the month and then move that forward if that's okay with everybody.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we move item number 10 to item number two on the agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Presentation of the Carbon County Employee of the Month, Rose Barnes.
Commissioners, this month, we actually have a department of the month and I'm gonna let Shelley talk a little bit and then I'll say a few words after, but we had a wonderful event in December that took place. We brought back the Christmas tree. Come on up Connie and Emily. The board needs to come up, everyone needs to come up, but it was a wonderful event and Shelley has some nice things that she wants to say and then I'll say a few words after.
Do you want them to come up, Rose?
Yes, please. Come on up. Yes. All of you. We're presenting actually to the department of the month and that includes Connie, Julian, Brenda Adley, Elena Fryer, and Corey's not here and we're missing one very special person today and that's Frank Corey. And without this, we're all gonna cry. The work that he does is phenomenal and we just, Shelley and the board wanted to thank him before any of this even took place, so you know, they go on my list and we just take everyone in order, but it is a very, very special thank you and I just wanna take a moment before they get started to announce, for those that do not know, that Frank will be the recipient of the Ballard fundraiser this year. It's bittersweet. You know, Frank came to me and started it in Linda's behalf and I'm glad to pay forward to him, but sad that it's for this.
Well, I don't know how to. So, the Christmas tree regalia was a very, it was a big success this year and there's many people to thank for that success and I know we've thanked the community and our donors and our amazing Friends Board members who helped put that together, but all that, we wouldn't have done it, we wouldn't have had such a huge success without the support and the hardworking staff at the event center. Frank was amazing in organizing, delegating, getting his hands dirty at the same time in helping us have a successful event and accommodating more than, I mean, they were so accommodating to all of the Friends Board members, all of the people that came and donated their time and they stayed there late at night after we all got out and quit decorating our trees, they stayed there and helped shut things down. They were there when we got there in the morning to help finish decorating, so it was nonstop around the clock with those staff there at the event center and Frank was right in the middle of it. He, I never seen him in his office, I never seen him anywhere but walking around probably causing a little trouble, but we are just, just have so much appreciation for Frank Corey and his entire department.
And all of these people do a great job. You know, right now with Frank's absence, they're making it run, making it, you know, everything possible to keep going on, so a huge, huge thank you to all of you.
And we have a.
Shelley.
I think you ought to, if you've got the final numbers, report on what that did for CJC.
It was around thirty thousand. So, the biggest fundraiser we have ever had in one shot. Usually we're, if, to raise thirty thousand, I think we've put on probably two, three fundraisers a year for three or four years to even match up to thirty thousand and so it is just, it was amazing and we're so excited.
Great.
It was wonderful.
Great, great event. I know, I know I'm the proud owner of the Harry Potter tree, so. It's only fitting.
Oh, that's great.
Thank you very much for your work with that.
Thank you.
And the Carbon staff and also your board.
Thank you.
Thank you to all of you. That was a great event. Moving item number 10 up on the agenda, consideration of possible approval of a request to extend payment period for delinquent property tax. Seth, did you wanna address this first and then we'll, I know we have some people here from Salt Lake to speak to it, we'll allow them a few minutes to speak as well.
Just that, this request came, it's in your packet, it's a parcel, it's owner occupied, it's a home. There's some question, they can explain more about the family situation, the situation of the person living there. But they have paid 2017's taxes, which shows they're, they're making an effort and those have been taken care of. It's been the practice of the commission if it's owner occupied and they're making progress towards and have a plan of getting that paid back, that we have extended a period of time, a year to get that taken care of, so I don't see any problem with granting that for this case.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to it? Please say, state your name for the record.
Yeah, Selah Sarah.
Okay.
So, this is our childhood home that me and my brother grew up in and I've been living in Salt Lake maybe twenty years, but my brother works on the road and he's home six months out of the year. Well, about seven years ago, my father became ill, he still lived in the home and they told us that he probably wasn't going to make it and he did pull through, so he couldn't live alone, so I took him to Salt Lake to live with me and the home stayed alone for a while, but with him being sick and me taking care of him, my brother being gone, we kinda didn't pay attention to the taxes until now. My father passed and then we got the letter and then my brother decided that since my father passed, that he was gonna live in the home and come and retire there and he's been putting a lot of money into it. He gutted it and put all new inside, everything, it's like a new house and we did pay taxes and we wanna keep the home in our family for the rest of our lives and hopefully our kids and so we just would like to pay him and we plan to, so.
Do you have a plan of, or have you met with the treasurer's office yet to make a plan as far as payment of those past due taxes?
Well, sorta. We paid the ones, but we haven't really met with her yet to pay them, but we were hoping to pay them by the end of May actually, so. We just gotta get back to work he does, so.
The lady downstairs said that she would give us a year, but I plan on having us paid for that. If I would've known that I was, we were that far behind, the link fund, it would've been paid, but I put all my money into remodeling and put a new patio in the back, not realizing that taxes were due. So, I had the money and now just, now that I don't is when they're due, so.
So, tell us about your plans of getting your employment opportunities or how you plan to pay it off by May.
I work for a carnival.
A carnival?
Yes, I work April through October, so in October I come home. I don't know if anything I gave it, my taco stand, but it was out there for a while.
Over by the old Radio Shack building?
Yes, that was me.
I've eaten your tacos.
Yes, it was me. Anyway, once I get back on the road, I have an income. Right now I'm living off of unemployment and just trying to get back up to Washington to start making money. I start, I open on April Fool's Day, actually, in Yaxma, Washington, so I will.
And plus he has me as backup, so. I do have my job, I've been there twenty years, so.
Like I said, if I'd realized that they were that far behind, they would've been paying that one and putting the past one back in my house, but that being said.
Who's the legal owner of the property right now?
I am.
So, you've probated it and gotten it into your own name?
Well, my, yeah, 'cause when my father was passing away, he was worried that the family home would be lost and so he.
He conveyed it to you?
He came to the courthouse or did something and had it put in my name.
So, you would have to be the party who would sign the agreement?
Mm-hmm, yes.
It wouldn't, you couldn't, I mean, you could, you could agree to help out?
Although he's willing to pay him because he lives in there, yeah.
Okay.
I have my home in Salt Lake, so he's planning to retire and live there.
I put a credit for the post forty grand in the house, I don't wanna lose it to you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any more questions?
I didn't have any more. Kay, did you want to speak to this?
I think, I had spoken to him and told him that I had asked you to extend the tax sale for another year. He has paid seventeen's and he actually had paid some on sixteen's also, so. And I did drive by and it looks like they are definitely working on it, so.
Okay.
I think we should give him another chance.
Thank you, Kay.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we extend as requested and as recommended by Kay for a year their tax sale.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And commissioners, just for the record on these, typically the interest continues to accrue and would do so in this case as well, I assume, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you're aware of that, okay?
Thank you for bringing it forth.
Thank you. All right, item number two on the agenda, approval of minutes. Commissioners, we have several sets of minutes, I believe three. We'll start with the December thirteenth minutes.
I did not have any changes. I'd make a motion to approve the December thirteenth.
We have a motion?
I'll go ahead and second that motion.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. January third is our next set of minutes. I saw no changes.
Nor did I. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And our last set of minutes is, are the January sixteenth, 2018.
That was the bid opening?
The bid opening for the Prywide and Wellington EWP.
And can we approve these minutes where, or does it have to be those who are present who can approve these minutes?
Who, who was present?
Seth, Jared and Bart.
So, none of the commission?
Well, so these aren't technically minutes of a commission meeting.
Right.
So, I would not include these as commission meeting minutes and they shouldn't be stored or kept as such, so. So, I think you can just, yeah, drop those from the.
Okay.
Okay. No action on those. Item number three, open sealed bids for proposals from certified public account firms to provide auditing services. Seth. Any commissioners, we received two bids, a request for proposal, or qualifications, better said. The first is from Tusher Walpole LLC. And they're out of Draper. And they have included.
Just for public information, how long do we run the ad for on this RFQ? A month?
So, the bid for the audit is forty-five thousand dollars. And we asked them to break out additional assistance to draft the audit report, the notes and the other required schedules, like the Schedule of Federal Awards, which they've included is five thousand dollars. The other, other proposals from Smunich and Marcy. And they have a not to exceed fee for the audit, for 2017's audit, which we performed this year of twenty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. The next year, next year would be twenty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and the 2018 audit completed in 2019 and then the 2019 audit is twenty-six thousand, eighty-eight dollars.
Did they give prices on the other, other services, other items?
They have, they have included their hourly rates for the management discussion analysis, footnotes, disclosures, Schedule of Federal Awards. I'm gonna have to add those ones up, hang on, 'cause they broke them out all separately. For management discussion analysis, four thousand, seven hundred. And for seventeen's audit, three thousand, four hundred and sixty-one for 2018, three thousand, five hundred and sixty-five for 2019. For footnotes and disclosures, eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty for 2017, five thousand, four hundred and eight for 2018 and five thousand, five hundred and seventy for 2019. And the Schedule of Federal Awards of one thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars for seventeen, one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars for 2018 and one thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars for 2019's audit. And commissioners, all of the, these proposals, we were asked to submit their peer review and information about their staff and who would be taking care of that and I would recommend that we acknowledge the bids and then be able to take a look at them and make sure that they're compared properly before making a decision.
Seth, I would have a question before we make any motion. Do we need to, is there a, is there a time constraint that we need to identify an auditor for this coming season?
You want to do it as soon as possible.
As soon as possible. I only ask because, you know, with the process we just went through and having two options, one that is dramatically more expensive than the other, do we want to find, do we wanna allow for more time for more proposals to come in? Do we wanna advertise again? That is my only concern and question where we only had two responses during, for, for an item that was of great public concern.
There's a limited number of CPA firms that can do governmental audits in the state.
There are, yes.
And of those, I've received phone calls from more than the two that we've received. They're busy, they've already scheduled out their, you know, the timeframe that they have, that they'd have to completely audit in and I don't know if putting it out for an RFP for extending the time period again would produce any different results than we've got. Other than anybody that submits afterwards would now have the numbers of the two that have submitted and could adjust their bid accordingly, so I don't, I don't, it's up to the commission, but I don't think it would be wise to put it out again and have a second shot at it.
So, I guess my question would then extend to the commissioners. Do you feel like we need other responses or extend the time period for more responses or are you okay with the two proposals that we received?
You know, I see an issue with what you're asking, Commissioner, because under state law we are required to do this particular audit regardless of what other auditing functions we may solicit or send out RFPs for. This one needs to be done now and timely so that we are back on top of seventeen's, seventeen's budget, you know, being audited. I would say that we need to assess these and see, but in order to perform this one, I think we need to move forward. Maybe we, if there's a desire, maybe we can move forward with some other requests or other information to further those audits, but this is a very specific governmental audit specified by code that has to be performed and so I want us to be in compliance with that regardless of the other services we may solicit.
Christian, I have one question for you. Because we sent it out as a three-year proposal, would there be any, anything that says we couldn't enter into a one-year proposal and send out again maybe earlier, much earlier, for a request for proposals if that were the, if that were the direction? Or are we bound by a three-year?
I don't know that you're bound by the three-year. I guess, I suppose the firm that you want to award the contract to could say, well, we're, you know, we've got, if you're going to give us, if you want us to do it and it's just a one-year proposal, I think then you open the door to them to propose additional terms as well, which is fine, you can negotiate that way based on that, based on seeing what these are. So, I think you could do that. I think you could make it just a one-year proposal if you want, but I think you open the door to them saying, well, at this point, if you're only gonna keep us for one year, we're gonna, we have a different rate proposal.
Okay, that's fair.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we acknowledge the bids as described and that we receive them as a commission to make a decision at a later time.
Have a motion?
I'll second that.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number four, open sealed bids for up to three thousand ton of UDOT spec hot mix asphalt road department.
Commissioners, we received one bid from Nelson Construction.
It is sixty-three dollars a ton for three thousand tons, one hundred, eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Daniel, how does that prepare to the last bid we received?
It's got a significant draw up.
I'd make a motion that we have acknowledged the bid and turn it over to Daniel with the Road Department to make sure that everything's in place and then go ahead and award.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number five, open sealed bids for two news, 2017 Ford Police Interceptor Utility All-Wheel Drive Vehicles. Seth. Okay, on this one we have three. First is from Auto Farm. Yeah, this is for both of them. So, the first, it bids two cars and they are Ford Explorers. Ford or 2018 Ford Explorer. And it's thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars each, so a total of sixty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars.
Who's the bid from?
That's from Auto Farm. The next is also from Auto Farm, Price Auto Group. I'm not sure what's different on this one, 'cause it's also for thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. They painted it a different color. Same Ford Explorer, everything? Yeah.
Yeah, it looks, it looks identical.
The other one is from Fleet Sales, Nelson Auto Center. Fleet Sales, Nielsen Auto? Nelson, N-E-L-S-O-N, Auto Center.
Where are they at, Seth?
Fergus Falls, Minnesota. At least that's where their billing address is. And they have thirty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-five cents for sixty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety cents is the total. Thirty-one thousand what? Thirty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Okay.
Car type again?
2018 Ford Police Interceptors ATV, AW All-Drive, EcoBoost. Where does it say what it is? It's gotta be a Explorer as well.
Oh, right there. Utility All-Drive, that's an Explorer.
It's an Explorer as well. 2018 Explorer. And they've included the spec sheets and warranty information as well, so.
Just three bids, right?
Yeah, the first two were from Auto Farm and they were, appear to be identical and the second is from Nelson Auto Center.
And the, if you would identify the low bid?
Nelson Auto Center by.
By minimal amount?
Less than three hundred dollars.
I'd go ahead and make the motion to acknowledge the bids and turn them over to the county sheriff for review and recommendation.
Do you want him to bring that recommendation back or to award?
To allow the sheriff to recommend and award.
You know, I'd make a substitute motion acknowledging those bids, Mr. Chairman, but also in recognition of our procurement policy, which gives that allowance for the three hundred dollars difference. I'd still like the sheriff to review those bids, but I would make a motion that we award the bid to Auto Farm.
I'll step down and second your motion. The second, the alternate motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Not opposed. I said not opposed.
Not opposed, okay. Motion passes. Item number six, consideration and possible award of bid for contract, contracted public defender services in the Seventh District Judicial District and Juvenile Courts of Carbon County and the Carbon County Justice Court. Commissioners, we've had an opportunity to review.
Uh, Commissioners, we've had an opportunity to review the two proposals. Do you have any more questions before we, or as we, uh, discuss this?
I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion, a motion. I'll make the motion that we approve the contract as stands.
With who?
Um, I apologize, I was reading the wrong line. I'll make a motion on this line too. I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the public defender contract in the Seventh District Court, Judicial District and Juvenile Courts of Carbon County, Carbon County Justice Court to the, uh, the three attorney group that has presented and, um, that we award it, when I say award, that we enter into negotiations to finalize a contract with them and that we, uh, that part of my reasoning for making this motion for understanding is the, the substantial amount of resources and, um, conflict cases and cost savings therein that can be applied based on having a three attorney group combination that has three local offices here in Carbon County and three attorney groups that all have their staff and resources that are local here within our own county and that in our negotiations, in, in our negotiations that we insist upon that type of structure remaining throughout the contract or otherwise allowing us to go out for bid at that time if that structure were to change.
So let me understand before we, before I cast a, a second on that here. As far as your organization, you're saying that two, if they drop below the three firms, that we would go out for bid again?
That we would renegotiate or go out for bid.
Okay, and the other item that I, if you would consider adding or amending to would be to work in regards to the grant with the Indigent Defense Fund. Because what we're at, what you're asking for is significantly more than what is in our budget. So in other words, the contract terms would, would, uh, be written in such a way that they would also, um, be harmonious with the grant application through the Indigent Defense Council?
And so my, my motion as to be written will, will state that we enter into negotiations to formalize an agreement with the three attorney group, um, structure, um, within the funding opportunities that are available to us through this grant as well as their structure remaining the same going forward and, um, that we can finalize that agreement at a later date. After we've, all parties have been able to review and agree to it.
We have a motion?
How, how quickly can we negotiate this, Christian?
Well, since our public defender intends to leave no later than the last day of February, then we need to make it a priority and get it done, uh, you know, see us, see how far we get this week and try and finish it up next week.
I'll make it, or I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number seven, review and possible approval of amendment to State of Utah Contract for Children's Justice Centers Home Visiting Program, Shelley Wright.
Thank you. Um, the, uh, one of my contracts, which is the CB CAP contract, um, they fund some of my home visiting program. Um, they contacted me in like October, November, and they had additional fifteen thousand dollars to add to our current contract if I wanted to accept it, and I said yes. So I'm not going to turn down any money. Um, and so they just, they are just amending the contract to reflect that additional fifteen thousand. The original contract is for seventy-six thousand, so. So we just resubmitted a budget to them in December and, um, they um, added, added that, amended the contract, so we just need to do an electronic signature. So I don't have any, um, um, copies of pa, of any of the contract for you guys to sign.
So this would be into this year, into two thousand eighteen?
Yes.
So, um, and, and I, I think that that definitely benefits your program, but we probably would need to amend our budget to reflect that increase, would we not?
We'll need to, to amend the revenue line of the budget. The, the expenses for the center won't be changing, but with a funding source for it, property tax versus grant will change.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. They require an e-signature? Yes, I can just forward the email to you.
I don't know if I have an e-signature set up.
I think you just type in your name.
I'll figure it out. If not, I'll have Barry or Rita help me.
Check on it because a lot of times that has to come from the sender to the recipient. It's usually not something you can forward on for somebody else to sign because of the nature of those e-signatures, so you'll want to track that down and have it sent to the chair for signature.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you Commissioners.
We'll get it figured out. Thanks. Item na, number eight, consideration of possible approval of a contract with Alpha Center Social Work Counseling and Consulting Service, PLLC, to provide licensed clinical social work pursuant to a grant. Christian, Sheriff, who wants to?
Commissioners, this is, uh, this is social work, uh, services that will be provided to inmates who, and it's going to be integrated with other medically assisted treatment, so, uh, primarily for inmates who have addiction and substance abuse issues. Um, so they will, they, they receive some medical services from Dr. Cam Williams there, but this will allow a social worker to also provide services in conjunction with that. Um, it will, there is a grant that has been, uh, funded for this um, and will allow, uh, up to twenty-seven thousand dollars to be paid, uh, under this contract. So, uh, we've, I believe Whitney and Justin have gone and received that grant already and it won't cost anything to the county and, uh, we can terminate it anytime we want because we get to write the contract with it. And seems like it's a positive thing for everybody involved.
Any treatment you can provide before and post, um, wo, will be helpful for sure. Correct.
Bring down, bring down recidivism and help them be productive members of society.
And I noticed in the contract that it is worded such that the, the agreement will terminate at any time that the funding runs out. Was there a specific number of years or is it on an annual renewable basis? Do we know?
I believe it's an annual renewable.
So money, money's in hand for eighteen then?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. So is, um, we need an approval on that?
Yes.
We'll go ahead and make the motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Further discussion, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Um, I was just gonna say, Sheriff Wood, um, I'm meeting with Christian and another center kind of like this next week. Would you have time to meet with us as well?
Yes.
Okay, I believe Monday, right, Christian? Did I?
Monday's bad for me.
Okay, well, we'll schedule it differently. Thank you.
Okay. Item number ten, did we make a motion on that?
We did, yes.
Okay. Oh, actually, we, we had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks.
Very good.
Item number nine, review and possible approval of a contract with Utah Department of Transportation regarding partnership project to re, relocate SR-ten access at Robertson Lane. Commissioners, this is, uh, part of the UDOT, uh, widening project at Highway ten. Part of that project, um, there was a, an intersection at Robertson Lane that was identified as a, uh, high, a hazardous intersection. There has been a private contractor or a group, individual person that has come forward and he is proposing a new subdivision. Uh, part of that subdivision is relocating how Robertson Lane is entered into and that's what, uh, UDOT is willing to put forward some of their money to relocate that intersection. Um, and that's what this contract is about. They will pay for the asphalt and the striping, but they will not do the substructure work. They won't put down the road base or the, the pit run underneath.
Developer gets it all prepped and ready, they'll do the top and the asphalt.
They'll, they'll pay for the asphalt, correct. Likewise, on the other side of that, um, the junction that goes down towards the Coke Plant and, uh, the Emery Tel, or is it Emery Telcom down there? I believe so, Emery Telcom. Part of our project, uh, what the county will end up having to do is prep that side of the road so that the intersections come in adjacent or directly across from each other. So we will have some work to do with the county road shop, but I believe putting that intersection at the top of the hill will allow for better sight distance for both intersections. Do you have any further questions on this, Commissioners?
The, the, the letter attached, um, does talk about what Mr. Smith would provide, but it goes on and talks about that the county would provide all needed materials and labors to build the road to an asphalt-ready condition. Is that still the case with this one?
On, on our side, yes, but Mr. Smith will, will prep his side of the road to those specifications.
Well, and the, the-
But, but the agreement is with us, so they can't hold him responsible for that.
The agreement wa, is with us, but in reality, this is not us putting in any extra labor or time or money. This is just that we're allowing for a private citizen to do a partnership with UDOT, is that correct?
In essence, yes.
Okay. I'm perfectly fine with UDOT coordinating with our local citizens and developers to make a safer, better project and, you know, unless there's anything further to discuss, I'm ready to make a motion.
I'm, I'm just concerned about the way the letter's written and if we have an agreement with, with Mr. Smith. We have the agreement with UDOT, but I have not seen anything come through.
Do we need to have a side agreement, Christian, with Mr. Smith?
I think we should, absolutely.
Should we, then if we make a motion, we could possibly make a motion contingent upon a satisfactory agreement with Mr. Smith?
Yeah, you could do that.
Okay, I'll make that motion then, that we move to approve, uh, based on a satisfactory legal agreement.
Contingent upon-
Contingent, contingent upon, appreciate that language. Contingent upon a satisfactory legal agreement between the county and Mr. Smith.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number ten was already taken care of. Item number eleven, public hearing on proposed amendments to Section Two of Carbon County Development Code. Christian?
Uh, Commissioners, Todd may want to speak to this as well, uh, but maybe I'll just give an overview. Um, this is, these are amendments to Section Two of the Development Code pertaining to the Planning Commission and to how appeals from, uh, land use applications are done. Uh, this, we've had a previous public hearing in the Planning Commission on this matter. Uh, maybe I could just run over some of the highlights of this quickly and then I'll hand the microphone to Todd. Um, the first big change is that this, we, we changed the composition of the Planning Commission to have seven voting members and two alternate members who can vote if at any time there are fewer than seven members present at the Planning Commission meeting. We, it also provides that there will no longer be a voting member of the County Commission on the Planning Commission, but there will be a non-voting liaison member to be appointed by you. So one of you would, uh, right now that's Commissioner Miller, who's been the voting member on the Planning Commission. If he stayed on the Planning Commission and you approved this, he would then be a non-voting liaison member who would come, could, could speak and be recognized by the chairman, uh, but he would not vote.
Also known as an ex-official member, right?
Uh, no, I'm not sure that, I think we had language saying that before, but I, I'm not sure that language accomplishes it. So I've, I've written it simply as a non-voting liaison member, but I think in some parlance, that's how it's used, what it's intended.
But, uh, the purpose of that is to keep the arms-length distance of the commission from other decision-making bodies such as the Planning Commission, which is in statute, um, required or is it-
Not required, but, uh, but what it does is it, it means that the County Commission will no longer be acting as an administrative, uh, will not be making administrative decisions when it comes to land use applications and zoning issues. Instead, the County Commission will simply vote on, on amendments to the Development Code in the general plan and will exert its influence that way, but actual land use application decisions uh, will be made solely by the Planning Commission or in some cases by the zoning administrator, which means that you as county commissioners are then no longer, um, you, what, what we've seen in the past is that the County Commission in trying to further economic development have encouraged certain businesses to come into town to look and explore options here in town, and then sometimes those businesses will bring a, an application forward that eventually has to be approved by the plant, the same County Commission that was acting as the booster for that project. And so the point of this is to make sure that there, the Planning Commission will be the sole decision-maker on those, thereby taking away any conflict of interest between the planning, between the County Commission's role as, uh, economic, in economic development as in, and um, in making administrative decisions. Now you will only make legislative decisions. So you can structure the, the county's, um, code in a way that, that you promote development and allow development in a manner that will be the best for the citizens, but you won't make specific determinations on specific proposals. Uh, so the, the amendment goes on to state that, uh, some of the other changes are that if you attend fewer than half of all regularly scheduled meetings, that's considered non-performance of your duty on the Planning Commission. We specify in here that the Planning Commission will act as the land use authority to hear all land use applications. Um, that the Planning Commission, uh, will hear conditional use permits and will approve subdivision applications. Now I still have to make some changes in the subdivision section, but that will take place. Um, we've, we've changed it also to provide that a, instead of a Board of Adjustment hearing variances and other appeals from land use decisions, we will, the county will hire a hearing officer to, uh, well, well, they'll appoint one, but they'll probably have to pay that person too. So, um, yeah, maybe you can find one that won't have to be paid, but typically hearing officers are always paid. Um, and hopefully that won't be a common occurrence. I mean, we have maybe two to three, uh, things typically per year that go to the Board of Adjustment, and some years we have none, so. Uh, so that's the big thing is that the, uh, we'll have a hearing officer be the appeal authority. Um, beyond that, I'm not sure, maybe Todd can talk about specifics, but those are the main things is that we specify the Planning Commission now is the land use authority to hear those, to hear, um, land use applications and you will not be doing that anymore.
Christian, when you and I had talked earlier, um, on, well, you may have changed the numbering a little bit, two-point-two-point, on, uh, two-point-two-point-two, the bottom one. We had talked about, uh, an officer may li, enlist the assistance of a geologist, structural engineer, or other expert. Did you change that to, to say that the applicant would then pay for any experts needed to?
I did not because I didn't want to change anything substantively from what was approved. I, I, I made a note of it, but I didn't change anything substance, substantively from what was approved and recommended by the Planning Commission at the last meeting, so, um, I would recommend that you make that as a motion after the, after the public hearing. uh, to be included. And, uh, so that would be Section two-point-two-point-two. It would actually have to be changed to two-point-two-point-three to say that if it, if a hearing officer needs uh, the advice of a geologist or a structural specialist, basically some kind of specialized engineer, that the applicant would have to pay for that if the, if the, uh, hearing officer decided he needed that expertise. And so I've made note of that.
Okay. I just didn't know if we needed to handle that before.
I I'm glad you brought that up. That's good. I don't let Todd speak if he wants to give some more specifics on it.
I don't have any more specifics. Um, it's just, uh, as Christian outlined, just the way we're hopefully expediting some of the processes and reducing the redundancy of the approvals.
Basically, commissioners, the way the the state of the law in Utah is such that um, you just about have to allow every conditional use permit that comes before you, unless there is a compelling countervailing public policy reason. Uh, case law makes it very clear that you cannot deny a, a a use that is allowed in your code unless there are very, very compelling reasons backed up by substantial evidence as to why you're not allowing that. So the fact that it's going to bother a neighbor or that a neighbor doesn't like it or thinks it's a dumb idea, that's not a reason, that's not a legal reason. Under the court cases in Utah, and in fact, under the laws of the United, under the Supreme Court's jurisprudence, that's never a reason to deny a permit. So unless somebody comes in with very strong, substantially backed up evidence, conditional uses generally have to be permitted. Now, conditions can be put on those, um, but it's very difficult. The grounds to to deny applications nowadays are very, very strict. So Todd's right, it doesn't make sense to have two bodies looking at applications which ninety-nine percent are, ninety-nine percent of the time are of a nature of something we've seen before. And so, uh, this will expedite things for companies wanting to come in and do business here in Carbon County.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any further questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, we'll open this public hearing at, uh, five twenty-four. Anyone that would like to speak to this, please come to the mic and state your name for the record. This is not quite like the, uh, the ones in last December. Seeing no one rushing to the podium to speak to this. We'll go ahead and close this at, uh, I guess it was five twenty-three that we opened at, five twenty-four, five twenty-five. We'll close the po- public hearing. And item number twelve would be the, the the official, okay. Item number twelve, review and possible adoption of a proposed amendments to Section two of the Carbon County Development Code as ordinance four ninety-two.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number four ninety-two.
And I'll second that motion.
Christian, do, is this where we would have
Yes.
An amendment to that section?
That's right.
Let me, let me amend that motion. Thank you for the reminder. So a motion to approve ordinance four ninety-two with Section two-point-two-point, which we'll call three, um, stating that if there was special uh, services are needed, that the applicant would be paying for those.
Okay, we have an amended mo- motion.
And will you just state that amended motion more time?
That I would approve ordinance number four ninety-two, subject to the change in two-point-two-point-three that specifies that if the officer needs to have, uh, special assistance from the geologist, structural engineer, or other experts, that the applicant would pay for that uh, professional.
Okay. And, uh, that we, I see two-point-two-point-two twice and the second one is the two-point-two-point-three that you mentioned.
Correct.
Yeah, we'll fix the numbering on there.
Yes, I'll go ahead and second your motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number thirteen, review and possible, uh, consideration of a lease agreement for new Seventh District Courthouse building between Carbon County and Administrative Office of the Courts. Seth, do you want to take this or Christian?
Seth should start. He's, he's, he knows more about the courthouse than anyone, but I can, I can talk about some of my suggested changes after Seth introduces it.
So this is the the lease agreement between Carbon County Administrative Office of the Courts. Carbon County is went out for the bonding to facilitate the construction of that building. Um, the Administrative Office of the Courts, the Seventh District Court will lease the building. Um, it is about sixty-eight percent complete. The completion date for that building will be June twenty-first, two thousand eighteen. Um, they're they're on schedule. We had a meeting with them today. That, that's the gist of it. We had this agreement and it went originally to us. The Administrative Office of the Courts wanted a purchase option in it. Um, we provided language that would would facilitate that purchase option or have them, with the purchase option, that they would take on the the maintenance of the building in exchange for the purchase option at the end of the lease if they they so wanted. When that was reviewed by the Division of Facilities and Construction Management at the state, they said no. And so it's coming back without the purchase option in it. The county will have the the maintenance of that building um, through the, through the life of the building. We will maintain it afterwards. Um, the Administrative Office of the Courts will continue to pay rent or lease agreement with the county as long as they're in that building. Christian reviewed the document. He has, he sent over memo with with several suggested changes and reasons for those changes. The only other item that that I would change on it besides the suggestions from Christian is changing the payee and exhibit B two to just make it Carbon County or Carbon County, um, treasurer instead of Carbon County City Manager, which is just their template issue, so. Christian, I don't know if you want to go over the suggested change you had.
Let me just hit a couple of the major ones, and I know Seth, you and I had not talked about them yet, and so if you have insight on those, jump in. Uh, the first one, you know, I wanted it to be clear that, um, they, they, the way they've written it is that there would be two successive five-year terms after the building is paid off and that those, that the payment for those two terms would be the same, same payment as at the end of the, uh, as at the end of the regular term. And I simply wrote in here that, uh, the rental payment would, at that point, start to increase by point five percent per year. Now that's really meant as a placeholder, but it seemed to me that once that building's been paid off, it's a commercial building like any other, and we should at least have the right to periodically raise the rent. If you wanted to raise it at a greater rate, uh, or less frequently, you certainly could, or wanted to put language in there that says we will that after the expiration of the initial lease term, we will negotiate a new lease. Um, you could certainly do that, but I did, I thought you probably wouldn't want it to just stay static for another ten years. It seems like a lot could happen in that time. Um, I, so anyway, I know generally, commercial leases increase from year to year, uh, periodically.
They increase and sometimes maintenance, maintenance expenses
Sure.
Beyond what could be foreseen.
So that's in there. Uh, with respect to maintenance expenses, we've also provided that I've specified that, um, the operation and maintenance costs would be reviewed every three years and specified that even though there is a specific, my concern with the way it was written is that there is an exhibit that shows that being fifty-six thousand dollars per year threw the out the whole time, and I just didn't want it to be, for anybody to think that regardless of what was written in the agreement, that uh, it would stay that way. So I just specified it'll start at that amount and then every three years thereafter it would be uh, reset to cover the actual costs.
And that's in, um, four-point-one-point-five?
Yes.
Section of the contract that addresses that.
Thank you. Uh, I also wanted to add a line that said janitorial services would be considered part of the operation and maintenance costs. Since, uh, the county is being asked to provide those, and this is a very large building, those expenses will be substantial. So, um, if we're going to provide them, it seems like that's exactly what part of operation and maintenance costs should be.
And and currently, the janitorial cost is built into it, but it's it's split with the the base payment instead of O and M. So I don't know if they'll have a problem with that.
So that's already, they've already contemplated that to be part of this?
Built in at three dollars a square foot in the base rental agreement. But I don't, I don't believe they would have a problem in splitting them out. And and it makes sense to split them out, but.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. So however you want to go on that, commissioners, um. Some other little things, just saying tenant will be liable for damages if they, they wanted the right to remove all fixtures that they put in there. Seems like if they're gonna do that, they ought to be liable for damages that occur. Um, they have a section in there that that, uh, acts as if it's a construction contract, the section in two-point-eight. Uh, we already have a construction agreement, and so they're saying we will consult with them and meet with them to finalize the architectural plans and reviews. I think that's just boilerplate. But we've done all that, and so it shouldn't be in there. It's, it's just sloppy if it stays in there, so. I've modified that to to state that we've met, that they've had a chance to insert all of their improvements into the contract and, uh, and that they've had full opportunity to build this building the way they want it built. Um, uh, they did want the right to change state agencies within the lease premises. Um, I changed that to state that, uh, they can't do that without our written consent. I believe the underlying, the the deeds for the property stated, and Seth, you may know more than I do on this, but I believe the original deeds to this property stated that that property is to be used for a courthouse.
Correct. Um, and I think the the biggest question on those ones is, is who can be in there? Currently, the the layout of that building includes, um, probation, juvenile probation. Um, if if they wanted to move them out and move the guardian litim office in or expand clerking, that they're they're financed through different branches of the state government, so if they wanted to move, for instance, probation out and the guardian litim in or the guardian to shuffle them around, I believe that's their intention, so I don't think we would have a problem approving it in that case as long as the base tenant was the court.
Right. So that's, that's a brief summary of the major suggested changes I have in there, commissioners. But I think what you, maybe the biggest thing to decide is what, uh, what you want, how much room you want to leave for yourself to negotiate uh, lease payments after the initial term. Because this is a, how many years is this lease?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years, so.
With two five-year extensions.
Who knows how, who among us will be here then, and I, I just think we ought to preserve as much negotiating power at that point as we can.
I agree personally. What do you guys think?
I don't know though if you'd like to, uh, you know, again, my numbers were just a placeholder. I don't know if you want to set specific percentages, if you just want to say the rate will be renegotiated at that point, uh, or if you want to say the rate will be renegotiated, uh, but if it's not renegotiated, it will be at this additional amount.
I think
Something like that, a combination of the two.
That latter version being the combination of the two, leaving a default, but leaving it open for change should we see fit. That would be my, my preference and opinion. And to determine what that default number is, you've already stuck in some numbers. Have we all had a chance to review those numbers? Or have any concerns with what's there as a placeholder?
It's just a five percent increase on what's there now, right?
A point five percent per year, so it's quite conservative. Um, I don't know, you know, I I just thought, well, at least it's an increase. Over ten years' time, it would only be a five percent increase. Uh, to the extent the courts might say, well, we're already paying more than fair market value initially to build the building or to pay the lease that will cover the cost of the bond. You know, if they're making that argument, I guess they could say, well, it shouldn't increase over that time period because, because we'll be paying more than the value of the rent for the first twenty-five years. However, um, we will also be paying all of the maintenance costs on the building and keeping it up, and, uh, you know, you never know what you're gonna have to do there.
Well, and that's the reason they're paying more than the value of the rent is to help us.
So, all right, so if they're paying more than the value of the rent through the term of the lease,
Then we should.
Everything should be square and evened up at the end. And so I don't think it's outrageous of us to ask to be able to increase it a- after the initial term's over.
Commissioner Potter, you work with, uh, real estate in the sense, I mean, we could be asking for a higher percentage, but at the same, in the same light, you know, a point five percent is probably an easy ask.
It is, and it would be, you know, traditionally tied to either a consumer price index or inflationary uh, number. Uh, so, you know, maybe the the best way, I think, not knowing what that twenty-five-year period would look like at the end, would be to have it open for a negotiation, a renegotiation and establish that increase at that point in time during that successive um, period of time, you know, that five-year period and then the next five-year period, maybe renegotiate it at the end of each of those five years. I don't think that would be unheard of. It is very, very conservative. I don't think the point five would be a very difficult ask, but I'm not sure, again, depending, I guess if they were to continue on at the same payment that they are where they are basically overpaying for those items, we may not have to renegotiate anything, but I think we better take a longer-term look at that and and possibly leave it that way. Renegotiate it, renegotiate that rate. Now, if they need an indication of what that might be, we could certainly tie it to a inflationary rate type situation, which would be that one to three percent.
And that would be during the renegotiation in the future? Is that what you're suggesting?
At the end of the lease, prior to entering into
So a- a- as far as the contract as it stands right now, the, uh, the latter of the three options that Christian mentioned, which were a combination of the first two, where we kind of designate a default with the five, the point five percent increase plus the ability to renegotiate if needed at each period, is that, is that what you're you're feeling is a good way to go forward?
I I would be fine with that myself unless we want to remove the point five percent out of it, but if we need a default, that's a good default position.
Yeah. I think that's, that's very, a- a- a very easily accepted thing going forward. I'll go ahead and make that motion if if we're okay. Mr. Chairman? I'll, I'll make that motion that we, uh, include the contract with those placeholders that Christian has already placed in there, that we have the point five percent increase at each period and that we also reserve the right to renegotiate, um, at each period.
Is that to approve the lease then?
To, and to approve the lease with
Send it back, so it'll have to come back one more time, once they receive it?
Yes.
Verify it. I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We're at the end of our agenda, commissioners?
Make a motion to adjourn.
So, so moved.
We are adjourned.
We are adjourned.